America, and it was a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We had a large turnout again tonight. Our new town hall is starting to get used.
Yeah, it's great.
Um, select board meeting tonight, first item on the agenda at seven o'clock is open time from public. And who would you address? Ms. Cohen.
Do you have to be recognized?
I recognize you, yes.
I recognize you.
Nelda Cohen.
Hi, Nelda.
I'm on board of the council on aging. And our board is here tonight to find out what's going on with the space.
Oh. Um, well, there's been emails flashing back and forth. If I can bring you up to date on those, my understanding is we have, are in the process of agreeing to a fluff and buff on the floor, replacing the severely damaged tiles, buffing the rest of those, putting down some wax, and if it's acceptable to us, that'll be the end of it, with a guarantee from, from Five Star that we're satisfied at the end.
Now, the guarantee is based on the, where are the tiles?
Appearance, initial appearance, I believe, is what I, what I have asked for, is that we be satisfied when it's all said and done with the appearance, that it looks as good as a new floor.
And what's the guarantee by the council on it? What's the period?
Till October.
October of what, of this year?
Correct.
Because we've been in, technically, they turned over a substantial completion of the building in October of ten, so we have till October of eleven.
Now, we were told probably a month ago that the select board was not accepting that recommendation. When did that shift?
This week.
From placing?
Well, I don't know that we've taken an official vote, but the emails have been circulating, and I would, I was gonna bring this board up to date tonight on that.
Okay.
From what I understand, ma'am, if I may help you, Mike.
Yes, yeah. And who else is trying to get on this?
Yeah, we were going to talk about it tonight, of course, review all the information, and everything was based in contingent upon a guarantee from the general contractor. And I don't know how long the floor is guaranteed for, I don't know if it's just up till this October or so, or more, so.
Well, I would assume that there's a manufacturer's guarantee separate to the contractor, the work, right?
I would assume so also, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I got a thing back from Diana, said that the work that we would do this week, of when work is gonna be done, and likely to be finished by next week.
Uh huh.
So, can we plan on ending the renovation?
Well, you're making a plan based on our, that we're satisfied, first of all. And we have to see what has to, my impression, we haven't, again, we haven't talked about it here tonight, is that we will talk about it if we decide to accept that as a proposal, removing the severely damaged tiles, buffing the rest of them, seeing if we're satisfied with the appearance. If we accept that, then the contractor would do the work, and then it would be a decision process on our part, I guess, again, to see if we are satisfied with that. And if we are, then we could come, we would know better at that point in time. Until we, until we're satisfied, I'd have to say, we don't know.
We're gonna see it, we're gonna see the finished product in order to say yes or no.
Okay.
And see what the warranty is from the manufacturer and the general contractor.
But it might help to know how long they can expect to be working in there. Do we know how many days?
Mm-hmm.
And the answer to that question is?
Well, um, yeah, what I had told Nelda was correct. If you agree to what they're proposing, they, um, they will have the floor finished readily, and I'm, I believe it would be by the end of next week. I mean, I don't, they didn't give me exactly how many days, but I don't think it'll take more than a couple days.
Yeah, but, and this is an appearance issue, to see where, you know.
Well, it's an appearance and also in terms of collateralizing, making, uh, done to the, to the work. And also, has the order, has measures been taken in terms of the preventing any other breaks in the area?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, those have been completed. The wall, there was a piece of, I guess there was some part of the wall that wasn't constructed properly, and my understanding is that's, everything that was the, the root cause of the issue has been corrected.
I was working in the veteran's office, and he's very nice, but that office was one desk, one person, he sees people, they have confidential information to discuss, and see how it prevents us from...
It was not our choice to delay it, obviously, but we didn't want to accept something that was less than a hundred percent either.
Okay. Who's definitely going to take to the board, the council on aging, or in terms of the work?
If it's, if next week, if it's really done next week, by the end of next week, then our next meeting on Tuesday, we could look at it.
Right.
So, the twenty-sixth, is that the twenty-sixth?
And then, I say, I should, if it's done next week, and we'll, we'll have another meeting next week, we'll decide whether we accept it, and then if, saying, assuming yes, then you move right in, right? Because then there's nothing left?
That's correct. Well, the kitchen, the kitchen remains to be done, but, but you can, we were told earlier in the project that you could move in without the kitchen being completed, but the kitchen will have to be completed.
Okay, so that gives us the window planning in terms of...
Yeah.
There's, there's some vagaries there, but we'll...
The general contractor, ma'am, is most anxious to get this done and completed so he can get his final payment, because we're, we're bound in a term of not, not to pay him until it's a hundred percent. So, he's very anxious to get this done.
Well, we were concerned with the fact that we were hearing, um, different scenarios, and also, we want to put a face to our board.
Yeah.
And we have the email where we cooperated, and you guys have been great in terms of putting us in the library and supporting us, but, you know, at this point, it's like, you got the new house, but you don't have a key.
I know. Well, here, and let's do this right now while you're here. Is everybody familiar with the emails? I got one back.
Would you, I, I have an agenda item, and I have a packet for you, would you like to?
Yes, let's do it right now.
Do that?
I'm sorry, we're gonna take that out of, out of order. But let's get that done.
Most recent ones on the front?
Um, yes, the, this is actually, I have two things. That's actually your, um, closeout report, your most recent closeout report, so you can see the, the email identifies what's left to be done, and then you have a detailed report of everything that continues to be open and everything that's closed at this point. And then, this is the letter or the, um, note from Five Star. Yes. And I, I would like...
How much is that monthly payment?
Could I comment on that? That's the requisition.
That's the fifty thousand.
That's fifty thousand.
It's, yeah, it's forty-eight.
Thousand sixty-seven.
Um, I just, I did ask for today if I could get the architect, the project manager, or somebody to basically, um, identify what was left in construction work, because the, the law, section thirty, thirty-nine K, which identifies your requirements for payment for, for the contract, basically says that the only thing you can deduct, and I think you're aware of this, is the value of the incomplete items as agreed upon. And so, when I tried to get them to give me something, they, they remind, I was reminded again by the architect and the project manager, and also the building committee, has approved the requisition and this recommended payment, and they feel that with the remaining amount that you have left, which is over sixty thousand dollars, even after you pay the forty-eight, you will be in, you would be left whole if there were any incomplete issues, and you have a list of what's incomplete. The only real outstanding issue is the ice dam, and that's not going to need a roof replacement or anything like that, so.
Michael, some of the closets still don't have ceilings.
Well, they did do the insulation, additional insulation that you had asked for.
Are they gonna get ceilings, Michael?
That, if they called for the original plans, they should be there.
Right, but they didn't.
There's likely to be ones at the town clerk's offices.
Those may not have called for ceilings, because the ones that are gonna, the ones that are necessary is up on the second floor with the paper, pipe chases.
Right.
But I'm still not comf, I'll, I'll speak my mind, I'm still not comfortable paying them based on the roof and tub. I know we saw some memos flying around about the comment about the membrane not being sealed properly, but we still don't know whether that...
There's some membrane on the windows.
Right.
Where the snow came above the rubberized roof and came into the cell, is a question that I had, and Gary called it up on the email, to, uh, the architect, is that sealed? Sealed.
Right.
And, because if you saw the picture, the snow was above that, that's where the heat was released, and the heat was released through those cracks.
But do we know if once the snow got below that, it stopped leaking, or did it continue?
I believe it did. I think it had to do with the amount of snow that was up there, because we had several most parts out of that, that we didn't have any lift to here, just when it got to the top.
You know, I, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with releasing money, I don't know how many...
So, why, why we held it before, because we wanted the final...
We wanted enough money that if everything that was possible went wrong, we could pay for it.
Correct. I, I still think that's my sentiment as well. I think that's our own leverage at this point, to make sure the job does.
I mean, the other alternative is to release, and I'm always hypothetically, releasing some funds, but not the full funds that they're asking for, as an item of good faith, and I'm just saying, whether we can do that or not, I don't know.
Diana, do we have a determination under thirty-nine K, is it making?
In my, I mean, Mike and I did have a previous conversation with town council, and based on my reading of thirty-nine K, I don't think that you have a legal standing to hold the forty-eight thousand.
I was concerned.
I really don't. I think if you, if you contacted town council...
I'd rather be sued than sued.
Right, but all due respect, Diana, you're not an attorney.
No, but our attorney told us that previously when I spoke to him.
But it's the old story, I'd rather keep, try, have someone try and get their money from me than try and get my money back from someone else.
Yeah, they're not gonna sue us, they're just gonna get the job done.
But is, is this gonna hold up the senior center floor?
It better not.
Well, that's what they're saying, that once they receive payment, they'll start the work.
I think the next step is, honestly, they will have to contact their attorneys, because they're getting bombarded by subs who haven't been paid, and we're starting to get phone calls from...
You don't know that's what they're gonna do, that's hearsay. You don't know what that's, what Five Star is gonna do, maybe they'll just come in tomorrow.
Well, that's based on my conversation with Kevin.
I, I would also agree with Mr. McDougall and Mr. Feline. Don't give them a nickel till it's done a hundred percent, and that way, we have the leverage, and we have the ability to complete it if they walk.
Otherwise, we get stuck with a bill if something's not done.
We had this happen to what, my understanding, at the North School, they just walked, and they said, you've got five thousand, retainage or something like that, it's yours, goodbye.
The, the full, the full value of the contract is two point something million. We're holding a hundred thousand dollars, which is, somebody tell me the percentage, but it's down around one or two percent.
Jess?
Half a percent.
Right.
Yeah.
Quarter of a percent. Because on every payment, when somebody approves the work being done, there's a retainage. This is called retainage. You hold the retainage to make sure the work is done to your satisfaction.
Exactly.
All right? I'm not disagreeing with what Diana said about one thirty-nine, that's true, you can hold a whole day. You pay ninety-five percent, I think retention is covered by one, if I'm not mistaken, it's five percent. That retention is what you hold. They've been paid for this.
Yeah, they've been paid for the vast majority of things.
That's my only comment on that. I don't know if retention or new work, but I think that if we can, if we do retainage...
I, I, I think we should clarify that, though. I think that's right, we should clarify whether it's retainage, because my understanding is there has been something capped off, so that this would actually be a requisition for payment, not retainage.
I don't care what it's called, I wouldn't pay them until the job's done.
But if, if we're supposed to be holding five percent on retainage, we're down to...
Hundred percent, see, ten percent is a hundred thousand per million, so it's two hundred thousand, so, yeah, one hundred thousand will be retainage at five percent.
Right, if, unless there's, unless it's someplace else, I...
How would we respond to their continued refusal to do the work until such time as we pay the invoice, so we can get to a standoff here?
Well, we're gonna get to a standoff. My suggestion is you tell them, you're not, we're not getting, you're not getting paid until the floor is done.
And they can say, we're not gonna do it till we get paid, so then we have a stall.
Well, then that schedule that we just, um, talked about?
Well, and, and these council and agent has to understand that we are, it's not just getting them in the building, it's also getting the building completed correctly.
You've gotta protect the town, and that's our bottom line as selectmen, and by keeping the retainage, we are protecting the town, because we're protecting your assets.
But Diana's saying that she's talked to town council and...
Oh, I did too.
And that we ought to release...
No, no, that's not what he said. He just basically said that he can, you can only hold the value of the incomplete item. So, right now, there's just a discrepancy on what the value of the incomplete item is.
Okay, what's the value of the floor?
I, I'm not sure.
Well, and this gets into the semantics, when we were here the other night, and we asked the value of the roof, the...
The whole roof contract was only seventy thousand.
No, that was the shingles. I don't know that that was the roof contract, because the, either the architect or the contractor was very careful to say, the shingles were seventy thousand dollars. I don't think he was trying to say the whole value of the contract to install the roof was seventy. But I may be wrong.
But I think it's been determined now, that, I think what Ed was just saying, it isn't the roof that's leaking now, we've determined.
Well, I don't know.
There's no water.
I don't think you can say that.
We know one component of it, we don't know that it's the whole component.
Right.
All right, let's, we gotta do something. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I would still, it's, you know, no change from where we've been before, but, you know, get the floor done, when the floor's done, it's okay, okay?
Are we talking about paying them, or?
He's saying, no paying. I think you're saying no paying.
No paying till the floor's done.
But they're saying...
And we have other problems where we still have multiple issues.
Definitive answers on that.
Now, we're having issues with the council and agent, and they're anxious to get in there, all due respect. It's a big building, and there are other issues in the building, and I don't want, the only thing that we keep their heels to the fire is this hundred thousand dollars that we have left to pay them. Once we give it to them, they're gone, and then the town gets stuck with fixing what's ever left to be fixed.
Well, we still have sixty, though, after that, forty.
How about that, that sixty is, there's other work to be done. Yeah, sixty is for actual work, it's not part of that.
I don't make any motion that we don't pay them further, we send them a letter that we expect the floor in the senior center to be accomplished by, give me a date.
Yeah. Give us a date, Nelda, what's the date you want the floor done by?
No, no, I mean, somebody, we need to pick a date.
Oh, let them pick a date.
Ten days from now, what's ten days from now?
They said, they said they could finish it by the end of next week, the end of the...
A week from Friday is the twenty-fifth.
A week from Friday is this?
Yeah, this is the eighteenth, this Friday, yeah, seven days from the twenty-fifth.
That's good, that's a holiday, yeah. The most crazy spread.
One second.
No, today's the twelfth. They said they could be done by the end of next week, which is the twenty-second.
But give them, give them a couple of extra days and make it the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, uh...
It's Good Friday, or...
Easter weekend.
That's a difference. No, and then, and we're not saying we're gonna pay them, but we're not, that we, I think, we're not paying them, and the letter goes out that we expect the senior center floor to be finished by April twenty-fifth. I agree.
And all other issues?
Well, I, I'm just willing to get the senior floor.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that, and the other...
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll, I move that we send a letter to Five Star indicating that we will be happy to pay upon the completion of the senior center floor by April twenty-fifth.
Pay what?
The, some percentage of the invoice, that's the...
You would be happy to pay what?
Yeah, something.
The value of the floor?
Value of the floor.
Value of the floor. Whatever that number might be.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
What about the value of the roof? That's an unknown factor. If we give them monies, or partial monies, we've gotta make sure we're covered, because we're saying now we're gonna, from what I understand, Jess, the, uh, the motion was to pay them something, or whatever, what percentage, I mean, we've gotta protect ourselves if we have a major roof problem, and it's gotta be done, and we don't have, we, we gotta hold their money.
Well, the only thing, Ed, I hate to put you on the spot, what do you think the roof would cost if we had to fix it?
I'm wondering what it'd cost then.
And you not, put a number on it? Ballpark?
I have seen what Dan Colley came up with for, uh, where he found the crack for this hole, and the only thing is, I was walking, probably two months ago, at the peak, it was very swan's, and I really think they have a table that had seen the next window where it's the whole upper section, the snow was up that, above that window, and we were getting the water through all the framing of these windows throughout this whole corridor, and once that got below it, it stopped. And I'm saying that, so we should be looking at that, make sure the windows and the top is sealed to the foundation of the building, or to the brickwork of the building.
I, I think we should get a report from the building reuse committee stating exactly what, if anything, is wrong with that roof before we release any funds.
Of course, the building reuse committee wants us to release the funds.
No, they asked, I thought, I thought they allocated for fifty thousand.
They want that, well, that's the fifty thousand that they want us to release.
That's a recommendation.
Well, we have a hundred that we're...
Well, we'd, yeah, so if we pay something, we'd still be holding at least sixty.
Are we going to vote on the method that they've proposed? That's what they want us to do?
Well, I mean, I think...
The method?
Method, do we accept, okay, let's...
We, we vote on the method, but not that we're gonna pay them.
So, we have a motion on the...
Well, the motion is second on Florida, as I understand it, to, to send them a letter.
They sent a letter saying that we will pay them the value of the floor if we wanted a signed value.
No, we're not going to.
Okay. Assuming it is completed by April twenty-fifth.
And Jess, you're referring to the, what they're talking about, three coats of excellent products, or something, how they're...
And buffing through a high quality.
Discussion, yeah.
I'm concerned that we're gonna give them too much money, and we're gonna be stuck if we have a, do have a major problem there, uh, if they walk on us, they don't care about fifty thousand, if it's gonna cost ninety to do, we're stuck. So, I don't think we're serving the town of Southampton well, but I, I can see giving them some monies, but we have an unknown factor, what's wrong with the roof, how much will it cost if we have to fix it?
Let me amend my motion, I suggest we pay them ten thousand dollars.
After they finish the floor?
Yeah.
Ten thousand.
I would vote that, because they are progressing very nicely, and picking up all the odds against it.
So, there's amended motion, like, is there amended motion, is there amended second?
Amended second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Stand.
Is that a negative or a stand?
Nelda, we'll get you those keys.
All right, stand. Vote yes or no. Come on, vote yes or no, just yes or no.
All right, um, sorry to delay that. We have the library trustees at seven-ten.
Hi, I'm Linda Summers, and I'm here with the library board trustees, and we're here tonight to ask you to sign off the, on the PCF for the new library director. Uh, I was head of the search committee, uh, we had twenty-four applications, and we interviewed seven individuals, and we have a very outstanding candidate, uh, whose, um, uh, references were glowing, and we're very pleased with him. Uh, we have a sign off by the PPPB, the finance committee signed off tonight, and I have the final paperwork for you here. So, uh, this has a copy of his resume, his cover letter, uh, the references, and, uh, we feel he is a very outstanding candidate, and he will be an asset to the library and to the community of Southampton.
And I just want to point out that this is for twenty-one, twenty-four, an hour for twenty-six hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year, total annual is twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixteen forty-eight.
Do you guys have the money for that?
Yes, it's a budget.
Then it's on budget, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a budget, it's really not a budget.
It's within, and which is what finance signed off on.
Right.
So, this is with benefits as well, right?
Yes.
Yes, twenty-six hours, we get him benefits. Does anyone wanna make a motion concerning Mr. Jeffrey William Obashan? Any relative to the...
Hardware chair.
I think he's creating big bucks.
Yeah, we're thinking, I wonder.
I don't think he can come and sell yet.
All, all the roof repairs we can get out of him.
I make a motion, we accept the nomination, please, of the search committee?
I'll second that.
I'll sec, I'll get a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I'd like to invite all of you to a informal meet and greet Thursday night, that's day after tomorrow, at the library at seven o'clock. Uh, we've just invited the trustees and friends and the select board, and, uh, we hope you can just stop by and meet him, and, uh, and, uh, you know, welcome him to Southampton.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Great work.
And we're almost back on timeframe.
Yes? I have a document that I wanted to add before you took the vote, because it was an email from Gary Swanson, in which he states that on February third, the proposal that was submitted by the contractor was accepted by the committee, and therefore, unless the select board was changing, uh, or not accepting that proposal, they would go on it. And there was no mention of money.
But don't get your...
So, at this point, I think we're kind of adding another layer of...
We, we, the select board got involved when the floor got scratched, and, and as I recall, and became concerned that we weren't gonna have enough money, and that they weren't, that people were accepting a product that was not one hundred percent for the town. And we got involved saying, we want, we wanted a new floor. Well, this is sort of a compromised position at this point in time, removing the damaged tiles, the severely damaged tiles, polishing or buffing the minor scratches, and to our satisfaction at this point in time.
Mike, also, it just, when, when that is said and done, the building reuse committee will dissolve, but any remaining issues will come to this board here. And I think what we're really trying to say is that we wanna make sure that there's no remaining issues that sort of slip under the door, they walk away, they take their money, and then we're stuck with a bill that we have to go to, you know, annual town meeting and say, hey, I'm sorry, we need a hundred thousand dollars for a new roof, and...
I understand that.
So, that, that's where we're at, I mean, that's, it's really...
I know, I know, and Gary said that there are a couple of things that are still left on the council list to do, and that they're working on that, but they're not meeting on a regular basis, and that's what really concerns us, that they weren't involved.
So, now we've given our blessing, whether it was a necessary blessing or not, because of the email from Gary about us getting involved and kind of slowing the process down, but we just didn't want to accept something that wasn't a hundred percent. All right?
I hope we thank you for all your time.
Wouldn't you, you know, you'll have a brand-new building a year after...
Right.
Um, Kelvin Molina, I would assume, is the only face in the audience I don't know.
Okay, will I stand here?
You can stand there.
Well, I want to first, um, quickly introduce myself, and it is Kelvin Molina, from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I am the project manager, um, the grant administrator for the CDBG grant that was awarded in, uh, back in twenty-ten, South Hampton, well, Southampton ended up getting awarded the CDBG grant that covers both housing rehabilitation and housing plan work. So, today, we're talking about the housing planning aspect. As you remember, a while ago, the board voted to approve a contract between the town and Jane Benard, the housing planner, the PUC, she's currently working on the housing needs assessment for Granville, Lampard, and Montgomery. What I'm, what we're, Diane and I are proposing today is for your approval to hire the Hilton CDC for the remaining work. So to go back a little bit, we put up a request of the polls to do a market analysis and a site identification for the remaining portions of the planning work for the CDBG grant. And, um, March 28th, 24th, we received all, all of one, actually, we received one proposal from Hilltown CDC. So Diane and I evaluated the proposal, made sure that it met all the criteria, required criteria, and all the, and we evaluated, pretty much reevaluated the proposal. We determined that they were highly advantageous and they were honorable. So currently, we're here now because the board is awarding authority for the grants. We need sign off from the chair saying that yes, we do want to go ahead and, in fact, hire the Hilltown CDC to move forward with the planning, the remaining planning aspect for the grant. So that's why I'm here today.
But it's a market study and a site identification?
Yes.
And this is a grant that has come in?
Yes.
And it doesn't...
These funds have already been awarded for the town, for the four, four towns. And that's, that one's already been allocated for, for that. So we're all good.
Who to approve the operation?
Housing market study and...
Market study and the site development.
I second that.
Any further, this, motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I have one more thing. So Southampton is eligible to apply for CDBG this grant season. December 10th has submitted to Southampton eligible to apply. So what we need, I'll be today, but I just want to start planning the scenes. This is a brochure our department has created regarding CDBG and what towns could benefit from the grant. Um, all I'm asking today is to look over these pamphlets. I'll leave extras with Diane. And just to sort of get a sense of what could happen with CDBG. We have to start thinking about, if we're planning on applying, thinking about what projects Southampton would like to pursue. I'm going to do this again with Montgomery, Granville, and Rayburg. Um, but we need to get a better sense from what, what the town is thinking of applying for. And that, you know, it will tell you pretty much everything that, that's eligible and then...
Yeah, just a quick question. I'm sorry. Can you use this for like developing a public safety complex? For design or for? Cause I see right here, it talks about rehabbing.
How about rehabbing an old town home?
Yeah, yeah, right.
We have the old town hall septic system first.
No, I was just curious, because we're talking about like a safety complex, would something like this?
The, the way that it would work is if the applicants with the grant would be going together as one public service, um, facility for that, like a regional thing.
A regional, okay, okay.
So currently we're partnered with Granville, Montgomery, Lanford, and Southampton. We need the, the community to...
And the Grammy, Wyben?
It's a Montgomery, Lanford, and Rayburg.
And that's for sure.
And again, to just sort of start, start thinking about what potential projects the town would want to apply for. And hopefully in the next couple of months, I'll come back and hopefully I'll just reach it to my own and see what, and I'll propose some ideas for the board and see who we are from there. And then they go from there.
Thank you for putting that...
Thank you. And when you're, when you're doing your planning, please remember we do need a, a public safety complex and rehab and old town home. Um, finance committee's not here yet. How about some minutes? Should be in your book. Oh, speaking of minutes, Reggie's come up, and I didn't bring it with me tonight. Reggie's come up with a way of keeping track of our old motions and that so that we don't...
Did she reference a select board votes and discussions?
Yeah. Oh, she put one there?
Yeah.
I thought I was the only one that got it.
Oh, that's good.
So look at that. She has two different formats there. And she wanted our input as to which format we thought was better. At least mine had two different fonts.
Larger font.
For the older people. Anyway, she had, keeping track so that if we want to go back and review how a motion was done? Whether we, I think one way is by date, the other is by subject matter.
Date makes sense.
But look at that. I, I forgot to bring that with me.
You want to see mine?
Uh, yeah. In the meantime, we got a minute, um...
Yeah, we have March 22nd here.
If someone wants to...
Which one first?
I think there's only one.
Only the one, March 26th.
22nd.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of March 26, 22.
Uh, is there a second? She gave, mine had two different ways. That's why I got one.
One format.
Here, this is a format.
Date.
She had a different format. She had two different formats on that. Um, so we got a motion. Did I hear a second? We were all here, weren't we?
This is the March 26th?
March 26th, 22nd.
How was that?
Right after the agenda today. Page right after the agenda.
Okay, I'll second that motion if nobody else has, um, to approve.
Who made the, who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, all right. So we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
We have signatures. We have a payroll warrant.
Payroll warrant, P 11 dash 42 for a total amount of $226,096.31.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It says a bill warrant. Do we have one? I don't have, no, no bill.
PFC.
PCFs. We have signatures though. Oh, we have the, um, you all saw this in your emails, I think, settlement agreement from Charter. Anybody have any problems with that? This has been vetted by town council.
Right, Diana? This has gone through town council?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Anyone see that? No, I agree with her. And I would accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, good. Whole house. Confidential. Oh, that's confidential. Timber cutting plans. Do we have timber cutting plans thing?
There's one in here, but it's not signed off by the forester.
There's a whole separate folder here.
There's one after the Charter. There's a forest cutting plan.
Well, here's a letter from Ed, here.
Yes, it was, but it's not signed off.
Yeah. The, the letter from Ed isn't from the... Oh, it's directed to, this is your letter to him.
Yeah, and I got it with him in... He's getting his permit.
He's what?
He's getting his permit.
He's getting, so he's all set?
There's no problem. So he was informed about the state of the year for, uh, pre-...
Our new process has kind of been working.
Seems to be working.
Uh huh, good. They're gaining access off a strong road, huh?
Yeah, you know, and that's, um, right behind Tony Gilder's property.
Oh, right there?
James Parker's house.
Yeah.
That's sort of the way, where we buy that sort of, go to the back.
Uh huh. So this is up on the side of, somewhat on the side of the hill maybe?
Before the hill.
Before the hill? Okay, do we need to take any action on this?
It's not signed off by the forester. But only you sign it if you can check it out for...
But it's not signed by the forester?
Oh, wait, it does, we had that one other one that the forester said no, then submitted it. And that's the one that gets the books. And that's the situation. I don't, I don't have...
Does mine have a sign? Hey, David, check that one, make sure there's one. Um, town administrators' report?
I have nothing. I, I mean, everything I have is on the agenda. Thank you.
Everything you have what?
Is on the agenda. I have just agenda items.
Other meetings and events?
I get signed off back on here, second page.
Okay, so, does anyone? What's our right action on those timber cutting plans? Do we, we, we just say, we don't do anything, right?
Yeah, you've been informally approving them, I guess, or just, you know.
We know that, I think it's more important that we know they're there and...
Right.
Ed knows they're there.
And Ed, we're making sure that they come to see Ed. That's our main priority.
Um, you, you now heard you've been invited to Thursday night, 7 o'clock, Town Library. I'm gonna, I'll try and be there.
I'll, I'll be there. I can't be there. I already told him.
I'll be there.
I'll try to be there.
Can we all, can we all meet okay? On a social?
On a social event?
Yeah, it's a social event. No, the new open meeting law says if it's a social event, you can...
We can be friends.
Isn't it a social event?
You got, you got a meeting April 19th. What's on the agenda? Or do we know?
I think it's on the next page.
Page?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
April 19th, um, budget meeting, uh, we have the surplus, hopefully we'll have a surplus ambulance, um, to award the surplus ambulance. Mark Reed wants to come in and talk to you. I sent you an email on that, Mike. And the IGA is ready, the IGA investment grade audit, um, agreement is ready now to be signed, so Kurt's gonna come back into that.
And the 26th is budgets, budgets, and budgets. And Greenway?
Yeah, we had to, we postponed the Greenway and then, um, the consultant had a conflict in their schedule, so they're gonna come in the 26th.
And then on the May 3rd would be our first meeting after elections, which would be reorganization. So appreciate it if everybody can come then, for sure.
And I'm ready to go for chair.
I do too.
We're always an idiot, you know? Come on, you want to, you want to...
We're sad to see you go, aren't you?
Come on. He wants to slide to his left. He just...
You gotta sit next to him, man. Not me, I'm happy.
Action list. Anything on the action list?
You have the info for the drug collection. That's just mostly a notification that we're gonna be having that drug collection on...
Drug collection here at the, at Town Hall?
It's here in the Town Hall, Park Hall. April 30th.
This ain't going out, this is not, this ain't, I'll get shot for my English. This ain't going out. This is not going out live, so, um...
It'll be on the, on the web and will, all these announcements will go on Channel 5 and on the website as much as possible.
Charter communication settlement we did, timber cutting we did. We pretty much did town hall updates. Building use policy, um, you all got emailed on the, um, cross one, I think.
Yes. I called and we're good.
The only prob, disadvantage I see to that is we've now started down the slope of all the good causes in town, but...
Well, it's a good thing.
A good cause will be coming looking to use the town hall and how do we stop them?
Well, that's what it's there for.
As long as they clean it up.
As long as they clean it up. Um, public safety complex. Oh, we got two ex, three extra names.
Oh, that's right. You have more names, right?
We have three extra names.
Four, I think.
Four now?
Four, yep. Yep, we received another one today. So they're in your packet, um, farther back.
Extra or additional?
We have...
Well, we have, you have seven, you have six people.
We need one more. We have Ian Illingsworth, who's the sergeant. We have Mike Goyette, who's the lieutenant.
You have George Zimborzki and, um, Don Schneider. We're both citizens.
Back here. Your backaways.
It's almost near, it's almost to the end, Jan.
Ian Illingsworth, um, is part of the police department team that goes around investigating, or not investigating, evaluating other departments for their accreditation, so... He's pretty familiar with, um, the necessary items to credit a police department.
So we have one last space, is that...
We only have one space left and we now have four names.
I thought we were gonna have somebody from, uh, a retired fireman that lived on E Street. Did we get anything from him?
There was a gentleman, I'd heard that there was a gentleman, a retired firefighter from Holyoke, but I never got anything from him. And he was told a couple times to get in touch and I never heard from him.
Don Schneider is a, is a former EMT.
There they are.
Do you want to take some time to, do you guys want to take some time to study the names or does somebody want to fill that last, that last slot?
How many, how many slots do we have open?
One. We have one slot open.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mike Goyette. As somebody who's part of the active force in those areas.
Ian Illingsworth would also be. He's a sergeant.
Well, lines of the time. I'm just making...
Ian is the one who does the evaluation for accreditation.
So my motion would be either one of the current officers?
Uh huh. We should have somebody from the police department, so...
I certainly support that.
So I mean, I, I know Mike. I don't really know Ian that well. And I've worked well with Mike over the past five and a half years, six years. I've probably had, uh, Ian a few times.
David's on it. We voted him last week. Um, do we, where's the current? Did we, did we announce the current makeup?
You did last week.
Yeah. Currently, we have John Fernum, Jim LeBree, Milda Cohen, Charles Kinnicky, Doug Blanchard, and David McGugl, so we need to name one more. David, your motion is Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I just, uh, have worked with Mike in the past and it's good you've worked well.
Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second that. I think that'd be good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And town administrator review, we don't need one, right?
We don't have any materials yet to...
Oh, town administrator review, I wasn't thinking, I was thinking...
Report.
Report.
Yeah, um, who hasn't given me those yet? Anybody?
Figured it out in writing samples.
I gave it to you that night.
That's right, you did.
How are you gonna do the analysis if you can't figure out who gave it to you same night, right?
I think so.
Who's missing?
Must be me. Okay, I'll work on that. Okay, I'll have it for next week.
All right, um, finance committee, Ed, um, Ed, you want to, you got something to do or are you just here on general purpose? Oh, okay. I didn't want you sitting there if we didn't have to keep you.
Okay.
Finance committee's up next.
The finance committee just passed up to the other PCFs.
We have two other PCFs. Oh, this, oh, and Chief spoke to me. These are both police for part-time, um, police officers. Peter Castillo, Pine Brook, Curd, Northampton, and Jeffrey Silva, Walcott Avenue, West Springfield. Hourly, 1763, part-time police officers. These would fill in for the two that we lost a while ago. And these are part of the permanent posting for part-time police officers that we have up. This, these are, we have permanent postings for part-time police officers. So you want to make a motion to appoint two part-time police officers?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee.
First, before we get to the budget, I just want to ask about this because I know you talked about it last week. Please, Chief, just gave us a request for a transfer from reserve of an amount of $8,600 to purchase $10,800 worth of vests to replace the expired ones. The reason I wanted just to make sure that this is something that you're all on board with is because $8,600 is 25% of the reserve account. And I mean, this is the kind of thing that in my past experience usually comes up at a special town meeting, you transfer from some other fund. Um, we don't, I can recall taking large amounts like this out of reserve this early, even though it may not seem that early, it's still two and a half months ago. So I just want to check with you that that's what you're expecting us to do, that that's what you were talking about last week, um, so that we're clear, at least from your perspective, what's going on with this.
Well, can we, can we wait till later in the year, Chief, to, to buy those and just in case the reserve count, something more, nothing, I don't know what could be more pressing?
Well, we can wait from the perspective of if nobody shoots one of our options.
I mean, it's kind of, kind of the right, wrong way to look at that.
I knew he was gonna say that.
Somehow I hope...
It's a clear answer, right?
If we have no, so we really have no vests right now that...
So they have vests, uh, but by the federal standards...
They've been recovered.
...per foration and wear and tear and vests, vests have a five-year shelf like that, five years expired in December.
Oh.
Um, I came to my realization last August that we were coming up on expiration by contacting the incentive letter to the town improvements committee to put it on for this year. You know, we only have so much money to go around, I recognize that. But it's obviously an important issue.
You know, if it were a special town meeting, you could probably take it from free cash and you can look at free cash and reserve account as essentially the same account, uh, except that free cash... No, it has the same account. I mean, the only difference is you got to go to the town meeting to spend the free cash and we can spend it, um, for this right now, tonight, if we choose to do this. We can spend it for this right now, tonight, if we choose to do this. But I just thought I'd mention it to you, because we just got this ten minutes ago. So we haven't had time to talk about it as a board. But I thought, we're sitting here with you and you talked about it last week, but we'll start with that.
Do you wanna, do you wanna come back to us next week and let us know how you feel? Or you, I mean, how do you feel?
Well, I, if you ask how we feel, I don't know. If you wanna ask each individual person sitting here, because we haven't had time, we were in the copy room. We weren't even up in our meeting, we were coming here. So we haven't discussed it. My first reaction is it's a lot of money to take out of reserve in the middle of April. But my second reaction is where else are you gonna take it from? Free cash? And which one is more valuable to us? Well, they're both valuable to us.
How much is in free cash?
I'm guessing forty? David there?
Yeah, I'm here tonight.
Oh.
Okay. And that's my recollection is, do you think?
I think it's less than that, Bob.
I think it's less than thirty.
Less than thirty?
I think it's less than thirty as well.
Okay, so we're playing it close.
I guess your question is how does the Select Board feel about purchasing these vests?
These right now, no.
Well, the right now thing.
Well, if we sign this, the Chief can purchase them as soon as he wants to, right?
Right. I have a question, if I may. Could we authorize you to purchase this out of current funds? And then go to the town, the next town meeting and ask them to take it out of cash and replenish that fund that you took it out of? Because it is for public safety. I mean, these are the guys that are protecting us, so we can't fool around.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, my second reaction is, who cares if it comes from free cash or reserve? We're spending all the money we've got. And by the time we get to the end of the year, we will have spent it.
And what do you have to worry about it?
And I, my reaction is because it's a big number. You know, we're gonna ask for nine hundred from this account, six hundred from that account. But when you look at eighty-two hundred or eighty-six hundred, and since you just talked about it, I guess I am asking that question. Are you, would you think this is something what I'd be doing right now?
Can I ask David one? Can I, David, you think we get some of this money back, right?
Yes. Well, at least be able to get fifty percent back, possibly a hundred percent.
And I, and I know this is a stupid question. How long does it take to get it back?
Well, the open enrollment and federal reimbursement begins on April twentieth. But there's a new caveat to that that they just initiated whereby they've mandated a mandatory wear policy within the department. We don't have, currently have such a policy, nor that enact of that policy is gonna invoke potential midterm bargaining with the contract, because it's a change in working conditions, believe it or not. I don't believe that it will have any opposition to anybody in the department and, you know, for obvious reasons, it's really, where is the vest now? It just is a formal policy in effect. So provided that there is no necessity to actually engage in midterm bargaining, the implementation of the, of the policy and subsequent reimbursement by the federal program should be for the rapid. To say it'll be here by June thirtieth, I couldn't say that.
But the entire amount?
Fifty percent.
Of fifty percent or the entire amount?
Fifty percent.
Chief, tell me that one's.
I have a question. Is this, do we have the agreement? And how do we?
It's, you have to purchase it and then during the moment period you apply for reimbursement. So you have to make the purchase first.
But do you get it from that? I mean, definitely get it. But if you don't get it, you can set it up as a receivable. It's a wash?
It's a wash. The question is, is it not?
There's always, provided that we successfully adopt mandatory wear policy, there's always a reason either we won't.
Does that meet the qualifications there?
No.
So I guess.
We don't need to.
So Mike, it's a wash?
Right, well, it's not a wash. It's a fifty percent.
They don't come back as free cash in.
Fifty percent won't come back.
In August. Well, Dave said maybe up to a hundred percent, right? Could be hundreds. So they don't come back as free cash for next year and then it just goes back.
What determines fifty percent versus a hundred?
State and federal.
So the Finance Committee is asking if we support the purchase of the, the vest.
Yeah, I could support that. I'll second that.
This is Dave. Can't you use it the same way we use Chapter ninety? If money doesn't come in, you put it into your year, you buy it like you do with Chapter ninety, take through that money versus take it out anyway.
Yeah, it's slightly different than that. But same way. I suppose we could do that too, but, but I guess here, you can get away with a negative number, June thirtieth. So I had it offset by the receivable.
So you could, you wouldn't, you could just buy it then without the, without the free cash of the reserve fund and then just say it's a receivable to come in? And it's a negative number of free cash?
It's like a grant that is, that reimburses.
So the free cash in August, whenever it gets certified, September, December, whenever it gets certified, but then just sort of offset that as a receivable. So it's, it's my moot point then. Really, so I'm starting to feel that we don't have to take it from reserve then, David? Just buy them, plug it in as a?
Yeah.
You show that you have a gap in the reserve.
That, that kind of fixes our problem, doesn't it? David, does that?
It does.
So is the Select Board wanna take a vote on having David purchase the vest and creating a receivable to offset it?
Yeah, as long as Finance can track that it's a receivable, then it's a receivable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vests are done.
What do you do with the old ones? Do you turn them in?
The old ones we have are sitting in the electoral panel. Did you work on that summer? It was crumbling on.
We don't. Good.
There was a program whereby we were trying to donate them to some organizations that were supporting, to Iraq and Afghanistan for the soldiers. But there was additional costs involved with us getting them shipped out that were a little cost prohibitive. How did they say?
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Finance, next.
Okay.
One problem solved.
So we got our first draft. That's all it is. But it's something that you can look at with us. You can react to it this week, next week, whenever you've had time to think through, but certainly you can ask questions tonight. And again, something to begin talking about. We're only a few weeks away from the budget review with department heads. So there's not a lot of time to keep talking about this, but there's plenty of changes that could easily be made over the next couple of weeks if we keep working on it. So I'll just take you through the pages and some of the notes that go off on the side. Starting with the revenues. That's your top page.
Bob, just, Ms. Spears is sitting there and she's, suppose it could be the next select person. She may want, if you have an extra one of these budget.
I have one actual.
If she might be able to follow along with us since we keep her up to speed, in case, in case she joins us.
Okay.
A week or two from now.
Pardon me?
David, you can have this and I'll look on with Doug.
I'm sorry, Bob.
That's fine. You'll see the three columns are two thousand ten, actual, two thousand eleven, and we're working off of this year, and two thousand twelve, which is our estimated. And then department head responsible is people we went through to try to get some of these numbers from. First, big number is real estate taxes. You can see the two thousand twelve number, eight nine fifty-six. But David gave us a sheet tonight that said over on the far right that it's actually eight nine seven four, which is about eighteen thousand more than we were looking at twenty-five minutes ago.
How does that, how does that happen? You guys look at the same numbers. I just, I'm just curious. I always.
He can tell you. It's in all of the line.
We, when we, this is the reserve fund that we set. About five years ago, we set this reserve, reserve box so that it would have the exact same impact for remaining years of borrowing to twenty fourteen, I think. And so we set a reserve fund that would change each year to have the exact same number impact this computation.
David, they don't have that computation in front of them, what you're talking about. I don't think.
Right, no, it's not on the sheets they're looking at.
No, so, so they don't know what you're referring to right now. You're talking about the school, the North School Debt Reserve, or the Hampshire Regional?
It's the North School Debt Reserve.
North School, yeah.
And, and so in this first estimate, it's in a, it had a larger number. It's a mistake too, though.
Can you tell us exactly which line we're talking about? You don't have the information. It's not your sheet. Basically, if I can just, just intervene, it's what we discussed last week. The Finance Committee just sort of used a percentage, you know, looked at the last several years and kind of projected the taxes. But there's actually a formula that you have to use. So David's talking about the formula. So once you insert those things into the formula, that's what, how it comes down.
So we're looking now at a hard and fast number, relatively hard number of eight.
Based on the formula.
Eight nine seven four. So a little bit more than we anticipated, or you anticipated when you sat down.
Correct.
We could spend that in a blue.
We had used the same formula with Diana to get that number.
Right.
David changed that formula because of that one line item that had to do with the debt. And he said it should be higher.
Right.
So we're now using his number.
But it's a hard nu, it should be a hard number.
Yeah.
David thinks it is.
The only thing that will affect it is new growth.
Right, so.
And David's number is including a hundred thousand new growth. That's this number right here, a hundred thousand.
Yes.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we move on to the, to the next category. Tax liens generally is entered as a zero at the beginning of the process. We feel like this budget is severely strapped this year. And we did a five-year project, or a five-year average of what was collected in tax liens. And the average was thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, although the numbers vary greatly. It could be eighteen thousand one year and fifty-something the next year. So we've got twenty in there instead of zero, because we feel like it's reasonable to expect that. And we need revenue.
Do we always collect something?
In the last five years, yes.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, but there were no zero years.
There was no zero years.
No.
It's a reasonable assessment.
That, that's a change from the way we've done this budget in the past. So we're highlighting it for you. You may wanna change it back to zero. The rest of these line items, we don't have anything specific to say. Most of them are just level funded from the previous year. The meal's tax is lower than what we had projected for FY eleven. That's more based on actual collections.
Now, the historical thing was, how much did they say we were gonna get?
Modern?
Remember when we first did the meal tax? What was, what was the number they said?
It was in the forties.
Yeah, it's forty-eight.
So this is, this really is reflective of what they actually predicted.
Yeah.
So there's a subtotal for that category. We get into department revenues and again, we have nothing to highlight. Pretty much level funding for most of them from the previous year. Building inspectors up. That's the building inspector's number that we're using. We got it from him. And border helpers up a little bit as well. So those are the numbers that we got from the principals. And there's a subtotal there. Bottom of the page, Chapter seventy, that's the governor's budget. That's the only one we have to work with right now. And you'll notice that the Chapter seventy is up a little bit. Looks like about thirteen thousand. And yet, when you get to the bottom of the page, unrestricted general government is down about thirty-nine thousand. And that's again, a number from the governor's budget. Will it end up to be those numbers? Of course, we don't know. Page two. Diana, I just asked Diana about the last assessments. Do you agree? We have like about five categories of assessments and they do total that. I just wanted to make sure that our number agrees with yours, but we can check that later.
Is that twenty-nine, Bob, that's twenty-nine thousand or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you subtract those. Yeah. We have no other particular comments to make about the other numbers. The, we, again, we're getting them pretty much from charity. We got the Intergovernmental. The police chief predicted ten thousand from fines. That's what we had in the year two thousand eleven as well. Earnings on investments fifteen. Again, the same numbers we had in this current, this current year. And then other financial sources, I've talked with Diana about what the ambulance fees fund in the budget. And we've come up with a number that also includes, and I highlight it on the right. This goes back to our December special town meeting that we just had, and how we talked about first responders being police officers, and how there ought to be some money from the ambulance fees covering that. And I believe the number was ten thousand. So we're continuing that for the next fiscal year. We wanna make sure that you agree with that.
I thought the town meeting passed that that was a permanent, did I miss?
That's correct, yeah.
It's a permanent transfer every year.
Right, that's what we're.
The way it was constructed was it was to be a permanent transfer every year.
Okay, so that's, that's okay included?
So we've included it, is what we're saying.
That should be correct. If I, if my memory serves me correctly.
That's the way we remember it.
We remembered it being annual.
That we purposely phrased it that way.
And then at the bottom of the page is our biggest problem, and that is fiscal ten, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand from free cash. Fiscal eleven, three hundred and twenty-three thousand from free cash. Fiscal twelve, probably zero from free cash. So we start out with a three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar deficit in that revenue category as we look at fiscal twelve. Huge number. We'll go over and you get into expenses. The one change we've made on page one, we just talked about tonight with the town accountant. And so his requested budget is changing up to forty thousand. And so we'll make that change after tonight. We didn't know about it before tonight. But of course, if you look under the recommended column, we still have it recommended at the full rate, which was twenty-nine six. In fact, you'll notice wage increase column is set at zero. So this first budget we're presenting to you has a zero percent wage increase across the board. There is nothing else that we've highlighted on this first page. You'll notice that there are some changes from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. Most of them on page one are not that significant. Page two. I just made a comment on the category where you see adequate, only because there was quite a difference between fiscal ten, fiscal eleven, and then what's being written in for fiscal twelve. And that is one of the numbers that came out of your committee. So I just wanted to make sure that as you look this over over the week, or whenever you look it over, that you still agree with that number. When you get to persons, protection of persons and property, you'll notice that across police salary and wages, we're basically level funding it. The request, of course, is much higher. The request is six hundred thousand. And there's this big question, you know, if you level fund it, what do you do with your new officer? But our first budget run-through is wages, level funding. Next page. I've just highlighted some of the categories that are covered by ambulance fees. That was mostly a note for myself. You may already know all that. And then in the South Hampton Education Budget, the really big problem is the huge increase in local tuition. That's almost sixty thousand dollars. And that's difficult for us because it's a lot of extra money to have to fund. But that's the most recent number we've gotten from the school officials. Continuing on.
Just one question. Is that likely to be an increase in the, in the, in the case?
More kids.
And, and a tuition, right. The tuition went up.
Was the answer to that question.
That's right.
You get to the next page. I just made some notes, again, mostly for myself. Winter Rose expenses. It's still listed for FY twelve, and ninety-eight's not eighty, which we always know over here is not adequate. But there's nothing that I can see that allows us to add to it right now.
Can we comment?
Yeah.
You need to add just a dollar you can declare for two.
Okay.
We need to add a dollar to that number?
Can I go below it? It has to have a dollar increase.
Didn't you get a dollar increase from fiscal ten to fiscal eleven?
A dollar increase.
Pardon me?
A dollar increase.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that you should be telling people earlier, because we.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. So we need to raise it at least a dollar. Okay, well, that I think we hammered the word, but. It's good. The next one I've just highlighted is tree ward and expense, only because, you know, everybody knows that not, virtually nothing except emergencies is being done. And yet, there are a lot of trees that are quite stressed. And one of our goals this year was to try to help that budget, like to help the Winter Rose expense budget. But we haven't been able to meet those needs yet. A little farther down, we get to the library director. That's been a topic of conversation. We've got it funded at the same rate as this year, although everyone has been talking about the full-time position as being desirable. It's not being funded yet, not in this particular budget. And then you get to the last page. And the only real recent change on that last page is in group health insurance, which Diana said could be lowered by forty thousand from the requested number. So we did. And we lowered requested from eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand to eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And I wrote big increase for that miscellaneous category, but it's not as big anymore because we've taken the forty out, so you might cross out that. It's still an increase, but not as much as it happened. I had that category singled out, like local tuition. It's one of the sort of budget busters for this year, but it's not quite as bad. If you look at the bottom lines, total expenditures versus total revenues printed on our budget, there's a difference of about four or five thousand dollars. So essentially, what we're looking at would be a balanced budget if you, if it got, if it ended up this way. David has identified another eighteen thousand in the property tax, so maybe looking at this budget, we might have a little more than twenty thousand additional dollars that could be allocated. But we've tried to highlight some of the categories that are already greatly stressed. And all the requests people made with. And all the requests people made with very good arguments to defend their requests for increases in their expense accounts, et cetera, are not being met with this budget. This is pretty much a level funding budget, including zero percent wage. So this is bare bones. And yes, it's fractionally unargued.
Bob, can I just tell them? I thought Barbara LeFlamme said that the new growth was like one hundred and sixty thousand this year?
I think it was about one hundred and eighty.
Hundred and sixty, one hundred and eighty.
But the assessors have given us a number of a hundred for next year. That's an assessor's number. So they were asked to predict it and that's the number they gave us.
But it could actually be higher than that.
Well, of course, a number of these numbers, especially in revenue, are still subject to, who knows? Especially the legislature, which governs a couple of our big numbers, chapter seventy and our unrestricted local aid. Those numbers could change as soon as they get together and make up a new.
But didn't you go over like a five-year trend for new growth? So it isn't like one seventy?
It's a low number if you look at.
It is, that's what I'm trying to say. It's a hundred thousand is a low number.
Right, I agree.
Did we also talk about doing zero wages and then looking at one percent?
I started with one percent, but we were maybe actually one percent, if all you count are the sort of town workers without counting schools, came out to something like sixteen thousand. I think was, if you put the one percent in, you'd have about sixteen thousand to your budget. So it's unbalanced as of what I had when I did this. Tonight, with David's new number, you could put in one percent and you'd be right about balanced. But also, I mean, I really feel like we need to let Diana go over this with her fine-to-home and identify for us all the issues that she's got with it. Because this is just our first run-through. And as you recall, the finance committee hasn't presented one of these in, I'm not sure how many years, probably since Diana was hired. So this is a little bit new territory for us. But it's territory we want to be in. So we're doing it and we want to do it. We want to keep playing the role of helping build this thing before we go to town meeting. But this isn't something that we're all sitting here saying, well, when we did this last year and when we did this two years ago, because we weren't doing this last year, two years ago, everybody was letting Diana do it.
On the issue of wages, we still have, this is zero, not reflecting the union contract.
Absolutely. That means meeting your union contract requirements without an increase in your budget. That's what this budget would be saying.
Because it does account for the union.
It does not. Because you were level funded budget for last year. So they've got to figure out, how do you give three and a half percent raise to your employees when you don't get three and a half percent raise in your budget line? That's obviously a major problem.
That's a ticking time line because we didn't do it last year. We were looking at furloughs and stuff. So now we're really going to be behind the ball on that. So even if we don't fix that this year, or if you guys don't fix this next year, it's just going to snowball because you're really going to be behind it.
Well, we could be in the furlough situation again. They balance their budgets.
There's going to have one worker working one day a week because.
I think one of the obvious conclusions is our reserves are gone. We're barely able to level fund our budgets, even though they have needs for much more than level funding. And there's no bright light on the horizon for next year. In fact, we're guessing that free cash next year could be very small. Only because we've got so many commitments that we need to cover and balance this year. And we don't see where. The reserve fund isn't going to cover all these shortfalls. The free cash isn't going to cover all these shortfalls. We're already stressed in two thousand eleven. And we're more stressed going into two thousand twelve with no obvious savior coming along in any one of these categories to look forward to, to bail us out. We, I think we need to talk about how we're going to get this town moving along in the next four, five, six years with a budget that will at least provide the kind of services that I think the people in town would like to see.
Anybody have any questions for this one? If I ask me?
No.
Just, I'd like to commend the finance committee. I think this is great, the effort that you guys put out. And as well, also what Bob just said is looking forward to a longer range than as we do. Typically, we get down in the weeds in March and April, of course. But at the same time, structurally, what can we do going forward? Which requires us to lay the groundwork now for that. And some of it's going to be difficult. All of it will be.
I also think that a message that needs to go out right now is that we have two and a half months left in fiscal eleven and we don't have reserves. So any budget that goes over budget in fiscal eleven, I'm not sure where the money comes, balance that out. We've been able to do it in all the past years. I'm not sure that we're looking at a situation where we can. So if a message can be sent out saying, this is a crisis situation, do not overspend your budget.
Should we in fact notify departments that there is no reserve fund available to bail them out?
We don't think so. I mean, sitting next to somebody who tells us what the winter roads wage expense overage might be, I don't know exactly what that predicted number is. But we're probably at a point in the year when Ed may have a good idea about it. And I bet we don't have the reserves to even cover just that. Do you have an order?
Currently, right now, about fifty-six thousand dollars is the deficit.
Yeah.
On the wage side, I mean, sixty-five to sixty-four. On the plus side, having Akima today, we're in position for thirty-one thousand dollars in reimbursement for the February eleventh through thirteen stores. So with that being said, we'll probably get a seventy-five percent pass. Of that might be worth twenty-three.
Yes, of the thirty-one, seventy-five percent of the thirty-one.
Same, they're being very hard. They know the situation. What it does to towns, that might as well be worth twenty-three. So. Ours is submitted as of today. And we'll take it, let's say, review it, do a backwash. But we anticipate at least twenty-four, I mean, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars coming in.
So maybe thirty-six deficit total.
Maybe, but we have strong demand.
Mr. Optimist.
Thanks. That's actually better than I thought.
David?
Mike, also, this year, something to consider concerning budget costs is going to be the price of fuel. Is fuel gone up considerably? Ordinarily, last year I had buzzed it for eighteen thousand dollars in fuel expenses. We came out right with that number. This year, we're already well over that because we've increased to already knows what it might be at three fifty a gallon.
Well, gas is three sixty-one and diesel is almost four, almost four dollars.
That's a significant impact on our budget for fuel.
All right. Going back to Bob's point about notifying departments that there's no reserve. Does someone want to make up?
I certainly would make a motion that we, the select board, that we can co-sign the letter with the finance committee. I would think would have the best impact to indicate that at this point, we do not see any reserves for fiscal year.
Don't overspend.
Level, so do not overspend your budget.
Mike, what about phone calls?
Well, I mean, I think the two larger departments are here. The school department would have to be.
Just give call, my calls or just let them know that it's no free cash. And just a clarification, Bob. You're not running for reelection?
Correct.
And I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for the work that you've done over the past few years, putting together this monster of a project that never has enough money. And I want to thank you.
Well, thank you. This was a short stint for me. I'm saying the same to you, right?
As it been once, the short stint?
Although yours wasn't a short stint.
Well, as far as the school goes, we should send the letter up to the superintendent. And we can follow that up with the phone calls.
Because we send those letters out all the time.
I know, but you got to put the, you got to make the paper trail.
And Jimmy, are you done also? You are. Also, we thank you very much.
We have a short stint either.
As you say, he's been around forever.
I want to take another question. Bob, over the, when South Diana worked with the cemetery commission, have the highway department take over cemetery, mowing maintenance and cleaning? There was an understanding that we would add money to the highway department from their perpetual care, because we were used to perpetual care. But since that agreement was made, Diana, coming from Raleigh, we have received one nickel. It was a bill spanning about sixty-seven thousand a year. We told them three, three, two, fifteen, three. And we have received any of that money. I don't know, just fell for the crap. But that's money for maintaining the grounds out there that I think you should be going back to cemetery commission and get out of the trust fund for an annual basis. Because that was an understanding that we had. For us to go over there and start maintaining the ground farm because we're spending way too much money.
Well, should we send a letter up there, the select board that?
Well, I don't, Diana, it's not for the past. I think it's a matter that you need to do it through physical action and you take care of it. But the new group of cemetery commissioners, they might not be aware of it.
Should we, will you do something to make them aware that there should be transferring money to the highway?
Not to the highway. They go to revenue.
And then gets?
Yeah, because it's in our wage item. But the other item, another thought about the school several years ago, they took the maintenance of the buildings, grounds out and shifted supposedly, I haven't seen the shift, but they said they shifted it over to the finance committee as revenue to put in a budget. While we've been doing that maintenance, we have had that shift of funds happen.
Well, the school committee, or the school representative's response to that is their budget was reduced, I think the number was ten thousand dollars, the year that you came to that agreement, which was two thousand nine. And they believe that the money went into the highway department budget. So they feel like they lost the ten thousand. So their part's done with it. You need to figure out where it went.
Ten thousand dollars, say it was two oh nine.
Yeah.
We're getting fourteen thousand dollars worth today.
Well, okay, but.
The one agreement. The one you asked me to put in the budget. That's all I'm going to tell you.
Well, I don't think it was their job to put it in.
Yeah.
But their budget, they claim and they showed us, right? They said it was cut by ten thousand dollars. So they took it out of our budget. Where did it go? That I think, I think David.
The budget bandit got it before it got to your department. Anything else, gentlemen?
Can I just, one thing, I have a bit of time to get to any of these. But we did come up now with nine months' mangels. And so very often, particularly revenue side, I'd say most people see comparing nine months of this year and nine months of last year. I think you know that's not perfect at all. It does give some sense of, that maybe some windfall hidden in there that we now. So I'll probably need to deal with that.
All right. How was the optimist, David?
Anyone else?
Which brings us.
Which brings us to executive session. We have two items on the executives.
Before you enter into that, can we just talk about next week's agenda with the finance committee and what, how we're intending to proceed?
Where do we go from here?
Diana, we looked at this budget for the first time tonight as a whole committee. And so we'll have another week to look it over and think about it and see where, and I hope get input from people like Diana and David. Because we do know that they know the budget as well or better than we do. So, but I don't have a specific plan for our committee, what we can do to come up with more revenues to allow us to have more money to the expenditure side. I think we've exhausted that right now until somebody tells us, well, you haven't looked at this category. And I think we should.
Well, and I don't think anybody on our board thinks the budget at this point in time is misdirected in any way after going through those numbers. So that's the, I guess what we've got as a first budget. Now it's to refine it down to closing the gaps, whatever gaps there may or may not be. And what we're going to do with the wage number. That's always the, the beginning and end of the whole discussion. What are we going to do with wages this year?
How does finance feel about a prop two and a half override? To sort of get things.
I'll only answer as, well, I feel about it. I don't see how we have any other choice unless we want to severely cut back on the services we're providing. I think we've exhausted all of our revenue sources. And I haven't seen us in this serious a situation in a long time. I worry about fiscal eleven, just getting through it. And I'm very worried about fiscal twelve because I don't think this is a very good budget for the town of Southampton. But I think it's the best something to come up with for right now. If I thought there was going to be four or five hundred thousand free cash coming in next fall and that was going to, you know, be able to prop up all kinds of stuff, then I might feel better. But I don't think so.
How do you feel about?
So the only thing I can think of is would you just set?
How do you feel about?
And say, what do you think? You want services that you're used to? Or would you be willing to see a pretty severe cutback? And if you'd like us to keep going where we are, let's.
How do you feel about a prop two and a half that's sort of focused upon? First of all, we got to catch up with the union wages. Catch up on what's owed for maintenance in the town, highway. As well as, you know, fuel costs have gone up. Since I've been here, gas bills have started up at two dollars a gallon and up to where we are now. But a prop two and a half just to reset the tax base to actually pay for the services, the minimum service. I'm not talking about anything special. We're talking about fuel, fixing the roads and paying the people we owe money to, basically.
Well, I think you'd want to look at, what do we need to go through the next five to six years? To me, if you do a proposition two and a half override, you can't expect it to carry you for the next twenty-five years. But you could look at the next five, six, or whatever, something in that range. And that would be reasonable. And be able to present a number to the town that says, if we had this number, we'd be able to provide X. And we already know that expense accounts are extremely stressed. The wage accounts, ditto. And as far as major projects going through, the word roads in there, I mean, that's a whole nother category of expense that is pretty great. But true that we do need it as well. My first reaction was just, this budget? And how can we keep these line items working at a level that, really, I think the people in Southampton appreciate and want to continue. But I'm saying personally, I don't know that we can without some support in addition to what we've got right now.
I think the question, though, coming back is what do we want to do next week? Do we want to meet with? Do we want to meet with?
Well, we'll meet today and we'll obviously keep talking. Do you have time for us?
We have a couple other things. So probably around the same time? Does that work okay for you, about seven thirty or so?
Okay. All right. And then the, I think I always ask the question, why are we in this condition? Is it because state aid has gone down or is it?
Yes. You have a year for four or so years.
Yeah, so, I mean, if state aid ever gets turned around, we might be in a better position.
I think state aid isn't the biggest number. I think certain costs are just going up way beyond our ability to raise revenue. And there are certain line items that we highlighted tonight. And there are going to be different ones next year and the year after that. You can't always predict which ones they're going to be. But we know they'll be there. And we're just not keeping up with revenue.
Thank you.
Any discussions had about the big increases that were around you?
Yeah, there's several discussions.
Folks know about that now?
Chapter ninety did increase, but here's the other caveat. The escalation clauses for fuel, only a lot of that off.
But it's like seventy-seven thousand dollars. I mean, it's not, it's not.
Two years ago, the escalation clause was a hidden factor. It cost us almost forty thousand dollars. That was added on after that to the price of asphalt. And they're anticipating that to be just as high of time. So once you take that off, add that to what we gained, we're probably around fifty or twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand. Well, we're going to see additional funds now.
Looked like everybody had like a twenty-nine percent raise.
Yeah, by I understand.
Across the state.
It was a nice clause, but the real number is next quarter. I mean, the MMA was asked for three hundred million